Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call the Planning Commission to order. And first of all, I'd like to thank those of you in the audience who have so patiently waited. We very much appreciate that. We're going to get it started so we can take care of business and then we can all go home. Could we start with the roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Here.
Commissioner Gui?
Here.
Commissioner Hamonis?
Here.
Commissioner Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here. And can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Oh, thank you. You want to start us?
Ready. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and of liberty and justice for all.
Members of the audience are invited to speak on any item on or off the agenda. If the item is an agenda item, you will be permitted the opportunity to address the Planning Commission when the matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter which is not on the agenda, you will be given the opportunity to do so at the public comments section. When wishing to address the Planning Commission, please rise, state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of five minutes. So we'll go ahead and start with Item B, the reorganization of the Planning Commission. We need to select a chairman. So I'll entertain, I guess we just do a motion or a nomination?
Nomination. I would nominate Chairman Chris Hall.
I'll accept it. So, do we have any other nominations? Does anybody else want to be it? Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Bergman?
Yay.
Gui?
Yes.
Hamonis?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and then now let's go with the selection of a vice chairman. Would anybody like to nominate? I would like to nominate this young lady right here.
I will accept.
Okay, we have, anybody else want to be nominated? We have a acceptance of the nomination. Anybody else? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that one.
Bergman?
Yes.
Gui?
Yes.
Hamonis?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item C, public appearances. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Okay. Consent calendar, I believe we don't have that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I requested they be tabled. I failed to mail that to you for review prior to tonight's meeting.
Excellent, let's go ahead and table that. And that brings us to new business discussion action recommended deny. E1, public hearing discussion action, conditional use permit 19-TAC 07 to allow for the use and operation of a gas station convenience store and gas station facility on the following accessor parcel numbers, 063-TAC 040-TAC 035 and 063-TAC 040-TAC 036, Imperial California 92251, for adoption of a Class 32 categorical exemption per the California Environmental Quality Act. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public. I just wanted to note on record that there needs to be language included in the discussion action where it says "operation of a gas station convenience store, gas station facility, and a drive-through fast food restaurant." So, background. The applicant is Fifth Street Development LLC. The zoning for the proposed project locations is C2 Commercial General. The recommendation is approved conditional use permit. The background, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct commercial uses within, with the operation of a gas station convenience store and a tentative drive-through restaurant use of up to two. Two currently vacant parcels that run along Highway 86 within the city of Imperial. The project is a proposed phase commercial retail development along Highway 86 that is tentative to consist of three buildings on two parcels, and when combined, the parcels are approximately 3.3 acres in size. The subject site is currently zoned commercial general. The land use to the east of the site is public facilities, residential uses. To the west of the project site are, is immediately Highway 86 and then residential uses and a gas station. The C2 Commercial General zoning designation is intended for the location of highway-oriented retail services and wholesale commercial activities. Section 2405120 of Imperial zoning ordinance lists drive-through restaurants and gas stations as uses that are subject to obtaining a conditional use permit. Any questions?
Not so far.
The applicant is not present tonight, but Oton and I can answer any questions. In your packet was an attached tentative site plan for the proposed development of these two parcels.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Has a traffic study been done since there's a middle school right there with the morning traffic and after-school traffic?
Can't hear you.
Oh, a traffic study? Just because the morning and afternoon traffic with the school there?
No, a traffic study has not been conducted because we were using a Class 32 infill categorical exemption based on CEQA, so we didn't, we didn't conduct a traffic study or ask the applicant to provide us with traffic studies.
Okay, did we ask the police about the traffic congestion that would cause that?
Yes, we asked the police department, and as part of the review, we identified that there was some traffic issues at that location, and we include in the conditions of approval, I think it's number...
I'm sorry. I have more to hear, I just can't hear you exactly.
I'm sorry. So, conditions of approval number seven, to include a right turn on 15th Street. In talking to the developer yesterday, I think we're going to be able to accommodate more than two lanes at that location, based on the survey.
And will there be a barricade? Because I know that is a situation, and essential from that chase one, making a right turn only, and people are still making that left turn, you know? Just to prevent that, that traffic trying to go eastbound?
We have that restriction at that location.
Okay.
It's placed on the condition of approval as well, but, I mean, sometimes people will make the...
The turn in.
Yes.
Guess we'll tell the IPD where to hang out.
We will, for sure.
One question, based on the conversation we had at the previous meeting, with the potential of designing a pallet or overlay area, would the developer be okay with building to that pallet?
I don't see why not. I'll have to bring that back to the developer, and if he wants to impose that as a condition, we can do that.
It sounds like, from what we heard at the meeting, that the city council is going to move forward with that idea, so I do think we need to at least put some type of language that says it's fairly possible, or probable, that it's going to happen.
Do you have any idea what type, what type of colors are you looking for?
That's based on what the city council is going to come up with, because remember, they just spoke about it at the previous meeting.
Yes, the, the only issue that I see for that, it all depends on when the development's on that.
Right, right, concur.
Because the specific plan or redevelopment plan usually takes about six to eight months. So we can still have the condition in it, and if it's, if we adopt prior to the construction, then yes.
Exactly, and I understand if it's adopted afterwards, then, you know, he can say you didn't have the plan before.
Correct.
But I would say that as a condition, that if the overlay is in place, he needs to conform to that overlay.
Yes.
Or similar language. Council or commission, what do you all think?
And if we can't, maybe we can just say what colors it can't be, if we don't exactly have a, an overlay template. Maybe just what we're looking not to have, as far as like the neon, or the yellow, or the hot pinks, or whatever, because we don't know exactly what overlay is going to be, you know, approved or want to be utilized by the, by the council.
Well, at least, yes, I mean, have something under conditions of approval that says you are not allowed to use this type of colors.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think...
I would, I would even put just subject for enforcement of like the future standards of it, but I don't want to hold them if, you know, we can approve a standard as well. So I don't want to hold up the project.
The other option would be, besides including the language, that if and when they're ready to apply for building permits, that they conform, if we have a specific plan or an overlay plan for that area in place, that they abide by the standards, or we can say that if not, they bring their proposed aesthetics for review to the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And it's contingent upon your approval. So that way we can phase it out, and we do have existing standards, so I foresee that with the, with the direction of council, just like we have our village commercial corridor, which is a downtown, we have a downtown redevelopment plan, that's most likely what they're going to want to incorporate along our Highway 86. So if we kind of mix in with what we can work with, which would be that vision, then you could monitor it as it goes along through the building permit process. And say we want to see your, what aesthetics you're proposing, the colors, and then give Planning Commission the ultimate ability to approve its design.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to talk about this?
Yes, please.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Jurnick, and I live at 1000 Rodeo Drive in Imperial. Thank you for allowing me to participate this evening. I had a couple of questions after reviewing some of the material. This was the last question, but I'll move it up to the front. Why is this project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act?
Class 32 infill exemption has certain criteria for projects coming in, and as long as the proposed project meets that criteria, then you can file for that exemption.
What is, in the Reader Digest version, what is a class 32?
It's for infill projects, so of this sort, I can give you a real short, even better Reader's Digest. Hold on a second, let me pull it up. So, the, it has five requirements, five, five criteria that the project must meet. The project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies. And the zoning designation, the proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres. The project site has no value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Approval of the project would not result in significant effects relating to traffic noise, air quality, or water quality. And the last one, the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services.
One of my questions was what Ms. Gui asked, specific to the traffic study. If you recall, let me go on my list of things here, excuse me. On page two of your staff report, I think it might just be a typographical error, on paragraph two, you describe as the land use to the east side of the public facilities, residential, to the west of the project site is immediately Highway 86 and then residential. I think you've got east and west mixed up there, because east of the project is the gas station, and west is the residence and the school.
Definitely a typo.
Thank you. And also on page two, it talks about three buildings. Is the CUP going to limit the developer to three buildings and no more? And if there is more buildings added later, will they require additional hearings on adding those to the CUP? Or what is the process to modify the CUP in the event that it's granted?
The CUP, the uses is what triggers the CUP. So the developer can ultimately develop the parcels so long he does not go over the maximum lot coverage for his parcels. Now, we're here tonight because the proposed use of a gas station and drive-through facilities triggers the need for obtaining a conditional use permit, which also triggers the need for a public hearing. So technically, whether or not he obtains the conditional use permit, he can still develop those two parcels with commercial retail so long as they are permitted uses that are outlined within our zoning ordinance table.
So the only thing that triggers the CUP for tonight's hearing is the buildings?
The uses. So, a gas station use triggers, requires a CUP, a conditional use permit, and a drive-through requires a conditional use permit as well.
So, my understanding is if he decides not to build the gas station and not to build the drive-through, I mean, it's your golf park.
As, as long as it's a permitted use within the commercial, general commercial zoning district, C2, he can, he can build.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And some of the CUPs that I've been familiar with are very specific driven, and I noticed in the staff report there, the, the language was kind of nebulous, it referred to ordinances and things like that. There was no specificity regarding roads and these kind of things. And getting back to the traffic pattern, I agree with Ms. Gui, on the east side of Highway 86 on 15th Street, it's four lanes. And that relieves a lot of the congestion going into the residential area and leaving, as well as a lot of the congestion going into the AMP. If, if we don't make the developer widen out 15th Street on the west side, it's going to be a nightmare. And I suggest that you go down there in the morning, when the kids get dropped off to school, and in the evening, the traffic is backed up from the school all the way to the signal light. It's a traffic hazard. And you can put all the barriers you want out there, it's not going to stop people from going around them. And I would strongly recommend, prior to issuing the CUP, make, do a traffic study. That would be one of my recommendations. And I'm not against the project.
Mm-hmm.
But I just think we ought to do intelligent growth. Have there been any considerations as maybe shared cost, putting some type of designated turn lane in there with a traffic control? Because that's one of the problems in the morning. I live in that area, so I trap, I go by that signal light every morning and every afternoon. A designated turn arrow that says green goes this way and green goes that way, because what you've got now is everybody is 10 minutes late to delivering their kids to school, so they're jetting out in front of people, and it's a wonder we have it. So maybe as a condition of this thing, we have the developer put in a turn lanes or turn, turn signals. And that would reduce some of the traffic if they widen the road.
I think, I was going to go back to the traffic thing when that kind of, kind of jumped past me, so. I think using just 15th Street to access that whole area is completely inadequate, absolutely inadequate. Some other accesses need to be considered, either an entrance on the north end, that can be accessed just going south, just going south to be able to come in from south, or some areas on 86 where you can right turn in or right turn out to relieve potential congestion. Because if you're going to feed this just through 15th Street with the school congestion area, I mean, I live over, I live, I'm just east of you.
For...
And I know exactly what you're talking about. I think that's a totally inadequate street.
I was born and raised here. And I look around, the other person I think that might remember this would be Debbie Jackson, or that, we did have it access for it.
I do remember that, yes, I still...
I lived, yes, I lived to a now. It turned, it used to go right off onto Highway 86.
The old road.
Exactly. And you could come south on 86, they had a little off-ramp right there, we could come off into Imperial Avenue. And the reason that they closed those, they closed that down, is when they put the signal light up on 15th Street.
Might close it way before that.
No, I don't believe so. I might be, I might be wrong. But that would be a, one of the simple solutions to this.
It's something that needs to be reconsidered, I think.
And, and the city owns Highway 86 now, so they could do that or they wanted to. And in all transparency, I own the property at Belford Road there. I own about six acres. That's why I'm concerned with it. Goes up to my second question, about five or six years ago, when the city of Imperial passed an ordinance about parking your RVs in your parking lot and stuff like that, that you couldn't do it for over 24 hours. I flirted with the idea of opening a storage area on my five acres over there, for long-term storage, for RVs, for dew buggies, yada, yada, yada. I approached the city on it. The first thing the city told me is that I had to put a six-foot fence around it, so it couldn't be seen. And the second thing the city told me is that I had to widen out to four lanes, the high, the road right there in front of my place. That's my question, is this developer being subjected to the same rules that I was five and a half years ago? And I would have had to pay to widen out Imperial Avenue myself. And the second question I have in that same vein, is there any consideration what the city's going to do about that drainage ditch?
The drainage ditch, are you talking about north of the property?
I'm talking about the drainage ditch on the west side of the existing property.
All around the west.
And on the north side of T.O. Wagner School.
Yes, north of it, there's no, that's still IID. Eventually, if there's any development on Belford, maybe we'll require to underground that portion of that drain.
It's, it's not the IIDs, it's mine. And the IID has mitigated or subjugated the easement that the property of, since 1945, gave to the IID, to the city of Imperial, for the city of Imperial to use as a water storage drainage. That's in your general plan. That's my question, is, is there any plans for the city of Imperial to pipe that or do something to mitigate the widening of the roadway?
Of, of course, I mean, there's plans for it. Eventually, the plan is to underground from that location all the way to Ralph Road, and as part of the, the plan, it's, and the development's going into, it's the morning star subdivision, it's the, where the hotel is at, and that portion as well. So the plan is to take ownership of that and underground...
You're talking about just south of the existing hotel?
From, no, I'm talking from Ralph, all the way to that point.
To the hotel?
Yes. No, to the, to the school.
And they're planning on doing what?
The whole thing, to underground.
Okay, the cadal?
Yes.
And those plans are at what stage?
They, at least five years away, that's for sure.
But there, the plant, there's no specific plans relative to this pending CUP?
For this pending CUP to underground, that, no.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Has the property been purchased by the developer yet?
Not yet, still, still on the works, and it will be purchased by, no later than January.
And is the purchase contingent upon issuing of the CUP?
I have to look at the contract, so I can give you an answer to that.
Okay, good. My phone number is 760-554-7176. But I, I'm in favor of the growth, I'm in favor of commercial development, it's good, it's good. We're a destination community, and I think it's a great idea, but again, it has to be an intelligent growth pattern. But the most important thing out there, Mark, you live out there, is traffic.
Okay.
It's, it's a nightmare. You've got kids crossing the street, they're strolling, they're not walking, they're strolling across the highway. You've got mothers and fathers getting there late, getting there, and they're, it's a nightmare. And 10 minutes makes all the difference to the world, and I think that developers should pay their way, and this is an opportunity, this developer's going to make significant money out there because it's a gold mine. Make him widen the roads for us. Don't come back five years from now and say, geez, we wish we'd have made him do it, and then where, the taxpayers are going to have to pay for this? He knows it's a golden opportunity, so make him pay for it, or her pay for it, the company pay for it, and they'll make their money out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Echoing on that, is, is there going to be access from Highway 86? I know when we discussed the AMP project, that we could not do that with the reduction in speed limit, is that allowable now?
It's, it is allowable now.
Okay.
Yes. We don't have a traffic study for that yet. The, you have access through 86 on 15, and one of, that's one of the conditions that we imposed to the developer, is that he needs to widen the road on 15th Street. We saw the need of that, and like I said, it's just part of the condition number seven, I believe. And the only thing that he would not impose in the conditions of approval is a turn signal like he mentioned.
So it's 15th Street?
15th Street.
But what about the Imperial Avenue?
Imperial Avenue, you have enough space there.
There's no space there?
No, there, you have enough space there, yes.
If I might, with Mark, just as I might, the gentleman said is...
Could you go ahead and approach again, please, sir?
...to approach the city, that they extend Imperial Avenue up so that makes an ingress regress on Highway 86, and it'll relieve a lot of that tension down there. Because parents that have come out of the subdivisions, north, I don't know what they call it, rodeo estates, what do they call that?
Sunset Ranch.
Sunset Ranch is north, thank you. They'll come down the signal light, and they'll just get on the highway instead of going by the AMP and come down the, by the highway and take the off-ramp right into the school. It'll reduce the congestion on the signal light, reduce it coming around by the veterinarian's office, and then when people are leaving, they could live the same way. We exited and got on and got off 86 for 35 years, 40 years that I can remember off that signal, that off-ramp there. And this might be the opportunity to push the city to do that. It's a simple thing, lay some pavement, it's done.
Right, well, and the last, because I do remember when it was like that, and I think they closed it a year or two after I started working for the fire department, because that was actually a hotspot for us to have wrecks. And the problem was if you had people that were going north to that, and then they would want to make a right-hand turn back onto the highway, and then they'd get in wrecks.
There wasn't two signal lights, sir.
Well, there weren't any signal light, I mean, there was nothing.
Exactly.
But like we have on Imperial Avenue out by the airport, it's a one-way road, once you get to that point. Why can't this be one-way only coming in, so that you can't actually go north?
Well, it's a pure...
Purely for the purpose of feeding into it, that way traffic coming from the north can feed into this thing through that access without actually people being able to go, people, they could come south into the access, but they wouldn't be able to go north back and then cross back, cross traffic, you understand what I'm saying?
Sure.
Yeah.
And the traffic between those signal lights is not going to be 55 or 60 miles...
Well, no, it's greatly reduced now, like before it was, there was no lights at all, people blew through the city.
And plus, if you don't allow them to exit off the highway, it turns that congestion right back into the 15th Street signal light. You want, you want people in and out as fast as...
We want to be able to feed people off of the highway into it, but not necessarily have them backfeed the other way. That's all I'm saying. We need some ways to, multiple ways to get them instead of going through 15th, because, you know, I mean, and it's 45 miles an hour, there's not going to be that many accidents. No, it should be greatly better than it used to be.
Yeah, I agree.
What would it take for a traffic study?
Yeah, a little bit of time, of course.
Did you have a comment, sir? Yes.
Hi, Paul Marzenkowski, I am the owner, actually, at the AMPM across the street. Busy building our car wash, hopefully you've seen the progress. Yeah, my concern, I'm obviously, the school kids, we see them every day, and a lot of our parents actually park in our parking lot, and we encourage them to park there, or even down the street, they pick up their kids from there, because they don't even want to, they don't even want to go across the street to close to the school. So, I mean, I'm all for development also, obviously, as I'm, you know, investing in the city, but just concern is for, obviously, health and safety, and I think road widening. I even asked, I think, as you remember, I asked to get a right turn in to my station or right turn out, right where that ditch is, and I offered to pay for it if I could do it, because I don't alleviate trapping in and out of my station. So, I mean, if we could ask the developer, if, if the city would go for it, I mean, I think it helps the developer to help me too, to at least do it right in and right out, and they could do it right in and right out out of their property, potentially off of 86. And then my other somewhat concern is obviously the, the close proximity of a gas station to a school. I mean, there's, there's kind of AQMD and guidelines of, they say about 1,000 feet. I'm obviously, don't get me wrong, I'm pretty close, but I'm definitely more than 1,000 feet there. I haven't seen a site plan, and I don't know exactly where the gas station is, but it's, I mean, it's literally right next to the school. So, you know, it's kind of a safety concern, and, and I don't know if the developer has asked their potential tenant, but any convenience store usually needs to sell alcohol, and the ABC, the Alcohol Beverage Control of California, usually anything within 600 feet of a school, they're not going to approve the alcohol license. So, I don't want to approve something, and then they say, oh, we can't build it, and they're going to approve something else. So, I just want to make sure the developer's done their due diligence to make sure that everything they're trying to put in is going to be, in the end, done properly.
And we appreciate you bringing that up, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm hearing a lot of requests for traffic studies, or ladies?
Yeah, can we ask for that? Is there, is there an alternate way? Because I know traffic studies are pretty expensive, is there an alternate...
Well, is, this was discussed on another development review committee, it was looked at by the police department, fire department, and public services as well. And the traffic study was not a concern, as long as they were able to provide a second lane on 15th Street. And with discussion with the developer, then they're going to be... And with discussion with the developer, then they're going to be able to add an additional lane as well, based on the survey. And that's why we post that as a condition of approval. And to answer some of the questions on the underground storage tanks, they still have to go through a COOPA, they still have to go through the Fire Department. So that's the condition of approval, number nine states that.
Have they determined if they're going to use above or below ground tanks? They haven't decided yet.
They haven't decided yet, correct.
Because that changes the game.
Yes.
Depending which one they use.
That is correct.
Have they consulted with the Air District on this?
I don't think so, no.
What? You're stating specific, was state code about gas stations was specific to the school?
Well, the AQMD, Air Quality Management District, you know, they, they say it should be a thousand feet. I mean, obviously, they're not going to say, don't put it there, they're going to ask for an application, and then they might deny it.
So it's a recommendation, it's not a law, it's a, it's a recommendation?
No, I think it's in, so I work for air pollution.
Oh, you must know.
But just looking at it, I do think there would be a concern coming in, you know, it's so close to a school, so I would definitely recommend them talking with the Planning Department at the Air District before that, just because, right next to a school, I know the laws are way more stringent, like our rules even, like with Ag Bernie and everything, there's a two-mile radius that they have to do, but like, away from a school, so I imagine a gas station has a certain criteria.
Well, of course, just, because you're an expert, so to speak, if the gas station were on the north end of the property, would that be considerable? That's probably pretty close to a thousand feet, it was on the far north end of that, that wedge that we're looking at in the map there?
Yeah, I, I mean, like I said.
Because we don't know where they want to put it on the property.
Yeah, I think it would just have to come into consideration to, I think it, part of the CUP, you know, they have to go to the Air District for it.
They have to, yes.
They have to, so.
Well, so we wouldn't issue a building permit, or a grading permit until COOPA, air pollution, Fire Department, everyone approves the project. So right now for underground storage tanks, they have to go up to planning.
Yeah.
So, Imperial County Planning and Building.
So, today, are we voting on this, or is it just discussion?
So the, no, no, this is a recommendation denied, so basically, what we're going to do is, I'll entertain either a motion to approve or a motion to deny, but the motion would be to allow for the use and operation of a gas station convenience store, gas station facility, and drive-through on the property.
I have a question, because they are exempt from providing a traffic study, or the Department of a traffic study because of, what was it that you stated?
We're recommending the adoption of a Class Thirty-two N fill categorical exemption for SEQA.
So it would bypass air pollution?
So, I mean, if we were to require a traffic study, would the cost have to be borne by the city?
If we require a traffic?
I mean, I mean, because they're exempt from it, right? Or, or they can be exempt from it, due to?
So, because we're using this categorical exemption, there's certain studies they don't have to provide, that being one of them, and if we were to impose this as a condition of approval, they would be responsible for funding it. Now, I just want to touch upon a couple of items. Right now, what we're looking at is the uses. So if we give them the permission, like, okay, yes, you can, the use of a gas station is approved, they still have building permits to pull, they still have to go through the state licensing requirements, the county licensing requirements. So at any point through that process, if they don't meet the criteria from the state, or our building permits, or the county planning requirements for tanks and underground storage, it, it stops our project or deters it until they can conform to what's required. As for the use of other items on this site, that, that all comes before you at the time, so.
Well, I just say, as a developer, I mean, if we have concerns about egress, and we don't address it, and come back, we address it later, you'd be like, well, why didn't you tell me a year ago? That's all, I mean.
And that was all, these items were reviewed by the, the City of Imperial has a Development Review Committee. It's composed of various departments, the Police Department, the Fire Department, or Planning Department, Public Services. So everybody gives a recommendation, and those items were not pointed out, you know, staff looked at it, and we formulated conditions of approval based on, on areas of concern. So, it, it's, you know, based on what we're hearing from the public, it's up to Planning Commission to also incorporate what our citizens and our residents are asking for, so.
So I have a couple of concerns with it. One, the drive-through, you have more idling cars, and, you know, I'm putting my air pollution hat on right now, so you have idling cars in the drive-through, right? You have idling cars picking up kids from school, then you have all these kids standing outside, and they're exposed to it, and then you have more pollution coming off when you're putting gas in your car? I mean, those are just things to think about, and it's proximity next to schools. I've dealt with environmental justice groups a lot in my career path, and I kind of see this as something they would be all over, and I wouldn't be surprised if they ended up putting a monitor, something there that measures P two-point-five around it, and I could just see it being a big problem as the developer, because, so like, a lot of schools will participate in like the flag program, where you see like the green or yellow go, and it sits right on top of the school. And so it could point a lot of fingers at that gas station. I mean, that's just something else to consider.
There are, there are gas stations within very close proximity in other cities, to schools, right across the street as well. One of the quickest examples I can bring up is in the city of Collexico, you have on your west side, you have two gas stations right next to Willie Moreno Junior High, and I think the school across the street is Bunch Charles, and they're right across the street from each other. And then by the high school in Collexico, you have a gas station as well, right across the street. So there are, there are uses, but it's up to us to bring you the information, and what makes you comfortable with passing a decision.
And my hope is that the applicant, I'm, I'm sure this is not his first rodeo, at the same time he's bringing this to the city, has gone to the county and applied for a pre-application process, where they would contact all of the agencies involved, all the branches, and provide the applicant with, you know, what we're doing for them, but on a county level. So at, at some point within the process, because the county's going to last longer, so I would assume, again, I don't know who the, I don't know the person, that they would be going through this, so they're going to, they're going to run through those obstacles, either right here, we're just doing a recommendation.
Right.
Or at the county level. And I, and I can foresee, again, like she said, with having the Development Review Committee, it would be the Fire Department that would be making these decisions as far as widening the streets, and, I mean, we can just make a recommendation, but that would definitely come from them.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I'm confused about the protocol, because you mentioned the County Planning Department, so, does the City of Imperial issue the conditional use permit, or does the County of Imperial, the County of Imperial issue it?
No, the City of Imperial issued the conditional use permit, and the permit for the underground storage or above ground has to come from the Imperial County Planning and Building Department. They have to go through them.
So, and you, you alluded that there was a committee that already looked over this and gave recommendations?
The Development Review Committee.
The Environmental Review Committee?
Development.
Evaluated, okay, but, and that's my point, is they didn't pick some of these things up we've talked about for the last thirty minutes? The traffic, the pollution, and all these things, and everybody just signed off on it?
They, no, you have the conditions of approval, and they stated that they have to go through COOPA, you have to go through Planning Department.
See, that's what, I wasn't privy to that, because you, you alluded to ordinances in your staff report, I don't know what they were.
Oh, okay, and I can.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but within the email that was sent, the conditions of approval and the resolution was also attached. And, and it's within the conditions of approval?
Yes.
That, that.
Well, they weren't very specific, were they?
Um, well, I would like to say so, number seven is the one that we're talking about right now in regards to.
Well, see, I just have four on mine that you sent me.
Look at Exhibit A, please, Exhibit A will have that.
Yeah, you just sent me four pages.
Oh.
And it says attachments, there was no attachments.
Oh, the conditions of approval.
I didn't see this.
But my suggestion, Mr. Chair, is, instead of denying it or approving it, you just table it and tell staff provides the direction that you gave them, then have them bring it back, that way you don't dissuade the developer to give them a negative sign or a positive sign. Because as Mr. Hammerson said, if you don't tell them upfront what's required of them, and you come in six months later, so, by the way, we want you to paint the buildings green, and you got to put a signal light in, and you got to widen the road, he says, why didn't you tell me that three months ago?
And sir, if the, the commissioners want to vote for that, if they want to decide to table, we can do that.
That's just a suggestion.
Yes, sir. Sir, I noticed you stood up, did you have something else to add?
I kind of went through this with the, with the car wash, you know, and I think, and I was here, I mean, I, I think, you know, in all fairness, being a, you know, a business owner of the city, I think the developer, if he's proposing a whole new development, which is pretty substantial, which is great, I mean, all, you know, I think there should be a representative here. I mean, I don't know whether they're based out of it or what, but there's obviously a lot of questions, and, you know, Alton and Lisa are great, but I think the developer should, or a representative should be here to answer those questions directly.
And as I just mentioned, sir, if the commission would like to table it and wait for him to come and answer, we can do that as well. So you understand that?
Does the developer have any site plans to provide us, or is this all the information that he could provide at that time?
A site plan is available.
But is that really incumbent on what we're voting for tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Was the site plan included in the agenda packet?
No. I didn't.
And this includes a widening of Fifteenth Street, you said?
Okay.
And North Imperial Avenue.
Is that the actual site plan? Because I haven't seen that.
North Imperial Avenue would stay two lanes?
North Imperial Avenue, two lanes, yes, south of it, and then on, on the west side of that property, you have enough space to add another lane as well. So the, the site plan you're looking at on Fifteenth Street, that includes an additional lane, but that, based on a survey that was conducted about a week ago, they were, they're going to be able to accommodate an additional lane on Fifteenth Street as well.
What kind of, we can't see what you're talking about.
I make a motion to table this until further meetings, so we can have more discussion on it, and hopefully have more details in the developer, and hopefully we can answer, they're here to answer questions.
One second. Okay, I have a motion to table this measure until, what, what would be appropriate? Could we do it next meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
At the next meeting, what information would we, would we have, would we have?
What information is the commissioner is looking for? That's, I mean, you table in the items, so.
So what additional information?
My main concern is the traffic, but you did address it, it would be, because number seven does not say it's the widening of it, it just says it's a right in, right out, it does not specifically say that. So I would be okay with it, just adding to number seven with that language, and then number twelve with the decorative treatments, adding some language in there for the future enforcement of the standards that Mr. Peckdell mentioned.
Also, would you like language in there that includes Planning Commission in the process of approving?
At a later date when the standard comes into effect, is that what you're saying?
If the standard does not come into effect, by the time?
That we would remove it?
You would be the approving body.
We would be the approval, so if they don't have a plan for aesthetics, they would bring it to us, and we would say, no hot pink.
Okay.
Did you have any other information you want from staff?
Can you guys find out the jurisdiction for the rules for this gas station located so close to a school?
And also, I think we need to make sure that the public has access to the site plan for next meeting, please. Would that help you guys?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
And to check with ABC also about the liquor license, with their certain jurisdictions at school.
So for a liquor license, ABC looks that they obtain a CUP, a CUP even before issuing them a license. So if and when at that time that we process a request for that, we would also be contacted if they're approved for a conditional use permit for the sale of off-site beer, wine, and alcohol.
Yeah, but I think, as Mr. Chairman said, ABC does have restrictions on how close you can be to schools before you sell alcohol, regardless of what CUP does or attempt, City ordinance, it's a state law.
Of course, and that would be up to ABC to enforce. If we give them a conditional use permit, ABC can always tell them, no, you're way too close to a school.
Are there any other requirements?
I do have a quick question, number eight, the onsite retention mission, where is that going to be located?
On the north side of the property.
Okay.
There's enough area for an onsite retention.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's.
Okay. Do we have any other requests of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a clarification.
Yes.
Question, are you wanting to actually table this? That would, or continue it, if we continue it to a certain date in time, then we would not have to renotice or re-advertise?
What's your recommendation? Because we're all kind of new up here.
If you continue to.
Okay, let's do that, then.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll continue it at the next meeting.
So will you notify us today, Debbie?
No. No, we will just go ahead and continue tonight's meeting to November twenty-seventh.
But I can send you an email, Mr. Trennikin, with the agenda item which would come out the Friday before the meeting, so you would have a five-day notice.
That's November twenty-seventh?
It would be November twenty-seventh, and I would send you an email the Friday prior to the meeting.
Is that the Thanksgiving?
To, it's a day before Thanksgiving.
Oh, yay.
Yeah, Thanksgiving's on the twentieth.
Can we make sure the developer will be there that day?
That, that wouldn't be our call, that would.
We can only request.
Yeah, I know, they, they might not be wanting to.
I just don't want to keep tabling or continuing this if the applicant's not going to be there as well. I don't want to drag this project.
Yes, we'll try, if you have additional questions, then you can always email us, and we're looking forward to that.
Okay.
Okay, so then we don't have to do a vote on a continuance, correct?
Yes, we do.
You can, if you would like.
I'm, I'm sorry for just kind of jumping in here with something different here, but being said, it is so close to Thanksgiving, do you all know plans and you would be available for the day before, or do you want to go to December eleventh?
I will not be here on December eleventh, I'll be flying to New York, I will be here on the Wednesday before.
Okay. I believe I will be out of town on Wednesday. I will be out of town on Wednesday.
So we do have a vice chairman now, so we can still hold the meeting on the eleventh. So it looks like we, we need to continue it to the eleventh, and it doesn't sound like we're going to have a quorum for that one. So we'll, we'll take, we will continue the meeting on the eleventh of December. So do you withdraw your?
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. All righty.
Ken, get you going back to the egress thing.
We're, we're going to go ahead and move on, we've already continued the meeting.
I was going to ask for staff to devise some additional information.
We can, we can do that after the meeting, yeah, we're moving on.
All right.
Okay, so.
Do we close this over here?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Continue, leave it open.
Okay.
Yeah. And that brings us to F, the Traffic Commission, Discussion, Action, Placement of New Stop Signs at Sidro Avenue and DePauli Street, Staff Report.
Commissioners, members of the public, the City Council directed staff to review the possible placement of stop signs in the area of Sidro Avenue and DePauli Street in efforts to increase safety and reduce speeding in the area. The item has been reviewed by the Development Review Committee. After reviewing the direction given by Council, staff found that it would be suited for the area to add stop signs at the intersection of DePauli Street and Madron Circle, creating a three-way stop. Sidro Avenue and DePauli are off-center and would not be an area suited for a three-way Placing the stop signs at the east, west, and north intersections of Madron Circle and DePauli Street not only would meet the vision of safety on the Council's behalf, but would, but would, but could potentially meet and influence some of the goals within our land use and circulation elements that are outlined. Any questions?
Yeah. Were there citizen complaints about the speeding, with cars, was there, I mean, why is this even being looked at?
It was direction by city council, they asked staff to look at the placement for, of stop signs.
So there's no real reason for them, other than staff decided they wanted to look at putting stop signs? There was no complaints by the citizen?
No, no, not staff, not staff.
There are some complaints like that.
City council. City council.
She said staff.
City council.
Oh, my apologies, city council.
Yeah, so we don't know what prompted them to make that, they just directed staff, and so before it can go forward, staff has to bring it through us.
Right, but there were no citizen complaints?
Yes, they have been citizen complaints, yes.
Multiple or two?
Yes.
Okay, because I mean, I went out there and watched traffic, and they all seemed to be pretty civilized drivers to me, so I was curious.
No, I was an officer that had seen a lot of traffic.
I used to live in that area, and it gets really bad.
So what's, I mean, could I, what time of the day, because when I was over there, it was like pretty, I mean, I watched twenty, thirty cars go by, and they were all pretty civilized.
In the morning, when I would go to, when everybody's going to work, I would say between hours.
Going to school and stuff like that?
Yeah, it's crazy.
So staff, if I understand you correctly, you are recommending a stop sign at DePauli and...
Madrone.
Madrone, but not at the other location?
Right.
Okay.
And this leads into that new development right there, going in, that same road?
Yeah, it leads into...
I make a motion.
You certainly...
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number PC twenty-nineteen dash one-seven.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second.
I'm sorry, clarification again, PC twenty-nineteen seventeen, the change to the conditional...
Yeah, that one's close.
Oh, sorry. I read that one wrong, so I, I will revise my motion for the placement of a new stop sign at Cedro Avenue, or not, sorry, DePauli and Madrone.
I second that motion.
I apologize.
No worries. And thank you for keeping us honest. So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, let's go ahead and call for the vote.
Commissioner Burnwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Bingham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamonis?
Yes.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Yes. Does that give staff enough direction? Do we need to do anything else for you on that?
No.
Okay. So we'll close out the Traffic Commission, and we'll go with Commissioners' reports. So at the end of the evening, you tell us something about what's in the community, or what kind of news you want to give us. Happy to be here is an acceptable answer.
I'm happy to be here, but ready to go home.
Very good.
I have two things.
Yes.
I was just recently asked about the hotel, just if we can get a status on that.
What are we looking for? I mean, there's good news coming up, that's all I can, I can say.
Okay, perfect. And then just in the neighborhood of Aden Road and by Morning Glory, there's a manhole that's kind of sticking up, right by the stop sign going west, just if you guys have time, check it out.
Sir, anything you want to add?